This is an unedited recording of the full meeting. Public comments are held at the end of the meeting. Thank you for watching. Please hit the like button and leave a comment. It really helps the algorithm. If you haven't already, please subscribe to the channel and hit the notification bell to get all the upcoming videos from our channel. Thank you and enjoy the video.
All this being ordered, we stand to pledge allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the right for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please remain standing for a moment of silence. Please take your seats. One more call, please. Ister, Savage, Croches, Barnhart, Martina. Is there any public comment on agenda items at this time? Any public comment on agenda items at this time? Okay, I make the motion for approval of minutes and reports, minutes from April 8th and 22nd, meeting and reports from the Fire Department, Police Department, Treasure, Controller, Code Office, Health Department, Parks and Rec, and Planning Commission. Do I have a second? Martina.
Yes.
Ister.
Yes.
Barnhart.
Yes.
Savage.
Yes.
Croches. Yes. There's proclamation for June 7th for Gun Violence Awareness Day, so just a real brief reading on that. So this proclamation declares the first Friday in June as National Gun Violence Awareness Day in the city of Sunbury. And proclaiming this, we honor and remember all the victims and survivors of gun violence that declared in our community and country. We must do more to reduce the ultimate gun violence that's happening in our country. So some quick statistics, in average in America, there's about 43,000 deaths and 76,000 wounded citizens throughout the United States throughout the year costing about $500 to $57.2 billion each year. Whereas Pennsylvania has an average of 1,700 gun deaths and additional 1,900 wounded by guns every year. Therefore, the 33rd highest gun rate violence in the United States costing about $21.7 billion, of which $470.7 million of taxpayer dollars. In Pennsylvania, mirroring the national average of 57% of gun deaths and suicides of 40%, communities across the nation, including Sunbury, have mayors and law enforcement officers who know their communities best and working endlessly to stop these gun violence. So by supporting the Second Amendment rights, law violations go hand in hand with keeping guns out of hands of children and away from people with dangerous histories. Whereas, anyone can join this campaign by pledging to wear orange on June 7th, the first Friday in June 2024, to help raise awareness about gun violence and honor the lives of gun victims and survivors by doing so. We renew the commitment of reducing gun violence and pledge to do all we can to keep firearms out of the wrong hands while encouraging responsible gun ownership and secure storage to help keep children safe. Therefore, I, Josh Croches, the mayor of City of Sunbury, would support with the members of the city council, do by here proclaim National Gun Violence Awareness Day in Sunbury on June 7th, 2024. Moving on here to Kaiten's Garden Staff Recognition. Guys, if you could come up here real quick so everyone knows. If not, you can turn around, they're all in the back row so you see who they are. Guys, raise your hands, everyone knows who keeps Kaiten's Gardens. Beautiful. So as they're waving, staring, probably mad at me now, I do have a letter of recognition for them here, little history of the gardens and what they do for the city of Sunbury. So whereas the city of Sunbury takes pride in recognizing Paul Lane Murray for 26 years of faithful service to the city of Sunbury in taking care of the beautifying Kaiten's Blue Bird Gardens. Whereas in 1920, a Sunbury resident, Charles Kaiten, started a hobby garden that grew unexpectedly into the part of a community landscape. Located on 1.5 tract along Sunbury Riverside, the park still contains some of the exotic trees that Kaiten imported from around the world, as well as representative species of two of your favorite plants, azaleas and rhododendrons. Like a hard peak, the garden has bounced back a few times. All but destroyed by 1930's flood, the park was rebuilt. After his death in the 1980's, volunteers maintained the Kaiten's Gardens until 1996, when the city took over and hired the Murray's to be protectors and rejuvenators of the park. Now a beloved city park, the garden is home of many varieties of trees, azaleas, flowers, and the gardens are a gorgeous setting for weddings and other special events. It is a hotspot for vertigrumers to capture special memories for families, couples, and prom goers. Therefore, I, Josh Croches, the mayor of the city of Sunbury, on behalf of city council, do wish to thank Paul and Lane for their support and dedication to the work of making Sunbury and Kaiten's Blue Gardens a better place. And... (applause) Lane?
You're preparing work for all your efforts, Paul. How've you been? I've seen for a while. And here we are, Jerry.
It was his idea. (applause)
I have to say something.
You have to give a speech now.
Okay. Um, we didn't do this by ourselves. We have people who are awesome. We had Jane Brockman from the Purple Hoffman Garden School. They were here this spring, and they came right the day before Ryan Reinhardt came to mulch with his kids. She got the garden ready, he mulched it. It's... We didn't do it by ourselves. We have my niece, Lisa, she knows all about the garden. She's a very knowledgeable, and she's an energy buddy. And Jack is just awesome. He is a fast runner and an asset to the team. This is, I'm not the boss, I'm the team leader. This is Scott Carper. He painted the gazebo with a toothbrush, metal, scraping all the rust off her. He did a fantastic job. I have, this is my guy. He's MacGyver and Murray. He can fix anything and has the best ideas. He designed a, um, what's? A cover for the old fashioned, um...
Fiders.
Fiders, among other things. We have first to thank Rachel and Stan Cycle, because Rachel, the garden still is. Beth Primmer came to the garden, we needed curtains, and she walked into the little house at the garden, and she said, "You need a lot more than curtains." So she got a letter composed and sent it to all the businesses and got $30,000 and had the house redone, with a new roof, metal, and white painted pine ceilings. She is fantastic. Um, where's Caleb?
He's not here to see you.
Okay. Jim?
He's here.
Loves, Jim loves flowers. Daylilies especially, which I knew nothing about, and he gave us money to go to his relatives or friends and made a day lily garden. We have 100 different kinds, no two are alike. I thank you for that. The mayor just surprised us with a David Stee grant to help. He likes the garden, nothing else. The street department is right there whenever we need them. Craysky, Randy, Terry's a magician, Mikey and Mike. Joanne and Matthew Shidley are 4-H leaders. They brought their members to help pick buds at the garden. I mean, we could do that for a year. And Ryan's Reinhardt is a doll, and so is Jane. That's all I have. Thank you all so much. (applause)
I just want to add one thing. I've had failing health for the past three years, so I have not been able to work at the garden like I have in the past. And so when Jack came on, Jack took my place, and he does a super, super job. So I'm just wonderful, just thankful for Jack.
(applause) We're going to end the meeting like that. Thank you once again for everyone involved. This community appreciates everything you guys do for them. Moving on to another project in the place, getting to the same place. Kurt, sweep update?
Yeah, just a quick one for y'all. Just wanted to give you a quick update. So far this year, we've had 59 volunteers come out to the park and 189 hours worth of their community service. Last month, we ended up doing a surprise field trip for all the participants on that day who showed up. Then we had Albuquerque participants that went to Albertford Lumber out of Mount Pleasant Mills. They had a two-hour personal tour of the lumber, learning about the process, getting the tree, bringing it in, cutting it down, off the manufacturer's. And they were, some of the groups that were involved, they were able to use that tour for part of their merit badge requirements. And then a quick update regarding the grant that's funding the program this year. We do currently have a balance of $3,210 and 49 sets. And since construction's going to move in forward here quick soon, I just want to make sure that my numbers line up with the city's, that we should have a balance of $30,678 worth of donations that came since 2022.
Will you say the number again?
$30,678.
Okay, yeah, I'll double check again.
Other than that, in the lumber yard, they donated 10-foot by 2-foot wooden slab, so our participants are going to be carving the entire name apart on there. And we're hoping that you'll be able to install it on the roof or somewhere on the pavilion.
Kurt, we're on pre-construction on 21st, and we'll open bids probably beginning of June. I'll keep you posted.
And you got that invite for the bid opening, right? Okay. Awesome, thank you, Kurt. I have one addition to the agenda. It is a notice to work the winning bid to the Reagan Street intersection improvement, so I make the motion to add that to the agenda. Is there a second? Savage. Barnhart.
Yes.
Our Taylor.
Yes.
Croches. Yes. All right, moving on. There is no old business, but there is new business, and I'm just going to go right through what we just added. So is there any questions on the awarding bid? All right, so I'll make the motion to accept the winning bid to Trow Electric Inc. out of Watson Town for the winning bid for the Reagan Street Improvement intersection. Do I have a second?
A second.
Barnhart.
Yes.
Ister.
Savage.
Yes.
Croches. Yes. All right, moving on. There is no old business, but there is new business, and I'm just going to go right through what we just added. So is there any questions on the awarding bid? All right, so I'll make the motion to accept the winning bid to Trow Electric Inc. out of Watson Town for the winning bid for the Reagan Street Improvement intersection. Do I have a second?
A second.
Barnhart.
Yes.
Ister.
Savage.
Yes.
Croches. Yes. Moving on, vote to amend the meeting minutes of May 8th, 2023, to include public comment and description of the comment. Do I have a second? Savage.
Yes.
Barnhart.
Yes.
Martina.
Yes.
Croches. Yes. Promotion of Corporal Bradley Slack to Sergeant, Chief?
Council Mayor, basically come today for the promotion of Bradley Slack to the position of Sergeant. He's met all the standards that need to be for this position. Very dedicated officer. He started the department in 2010 as a full-time police officer. Through the years, he's been with us 13 and a half, almost 14 years. He basically climbed through the ranks of patrolman to corporal. But today, he's being promoted to the position of Sergeant. In my 22 years being with Sunbury, he's been my right side, like a brother. He basically, he's been amazing through my transition as chief, making sure that things are running smoothly through his department, as we have a lot of changes that are going on and a lot of demands that are being put on the officers to be a standard that we both believe in in being Sunbury police officers. So he has definitely earned this position and is very deserving of this position. So I want to congratulate you. Great job. Brother.
(applause) Well, then we can approve it. Just stab him right away. (laughter) Oh, yeah. (laughter) All right, so now we can, now we can approve it. Just stab him right away. (laughter) (laughter) I don't see blood, so it's good. Oh, yeah. (laughter) (applause) Thank you very much. Yep. All right, thank you. All right, so now we need to make it official now, so...
I didn't even take the first one.
I made the motion to promote Corporal Bradley Slack to Sergeant. Do I have a second?
Second.
Ister.
Yes.
Barnhart.
Yes.
Martina.
Yes.
Savage.
Yes.
Croches. Yes. And Councilman Savage?
While we're going through a lot of things about police officers today and celebrating the promotion, I also want to recognize Officer Blank, because this past weekend, I was in a minor car accident, and you were very helpful and called me within 24 hours with my claim number, so I just wanted to tell you thank you, but also just recognize the professionalism and how quickly you responded, so thank you.
Thank you. Uh, moving on to removal of probationary officer of the period, Officer Riley Brembridge. Chief, do you want to speak a little bit about that?
Okay, so Riley basically came to us on May 8th of 2024, or 23, as a, he was on like part-time status, came to us full-time May 8th. His probationary period has ended on May 8th of 2024, so we asked him to reenter service from that position.
In the area 326 Archery Cross Street from the Police Department, RP Vol intake letters, a neighbor's, a farmer's medication, scaling screen.
Hey, we'll be back in a moment. So basically Riley finished up that period and he come on, we're asking for him to be removed out of the base to become Patrolman 2 starting May 8th of 2024.
All right, so I make the motion to remove Officer Riley Brembridge from probationary period and move on to Patrolman 2. Do I have a second? Ister.
Yes.
Savage.
Yes.
Barnhart.
Yes.
Croches.
Yes.
Moving on, Police Academy documentation, I know the Chief and I and the whole council, Chief, you just explained a little bit of that to the public so they're aware what's going on.
With the Police Department, we were going through a testing process with the Social Service beside us. We tested approximately 19 individuals, 15 had showed for the test. In the process, it came down after the written exam, the physical exam, and the oral boards, it came down to 11. At this point, we're at the 11 mark, presented the top five to Social Service with our list. The list is posted in the front of the building and also down at our Police Department with the ranking of the officers. At this point, what we are looking to do is move forward now to sending the candidates that pass the background investigations to the academy. Three candidates will be sent with the approval of council. They will start at Hairsburg Area Community College in July. They will then come back to us December 23rd, I believe, of 2024, and then be on the schedule full-time the January 1st. So at this point, we'd be looking for the approval for three of the individuals to later be named, to be sent to the Hairsburg Area Community College for the training, and then also to come on Police Department then in January as full-time officers.
All right, so to let everyone know, the individuals that will be announced at a later date, they are the three highest scoring individuals out of everyone that was tested, so to let everyone know that. So I will make the motion to accept the documentation needed to accept...
You want to accept the documentation that's being presented to the potential employees, essential officers, and at that point then offer that employment to those three who are the highest score.
All right, I'll make that into a form of a motion.
I say...
Martina.
Yes.
Ister.
Yes.
Savage.
Yes.
Croches.
Yes.
Yes. And just so everyone knows, we're still hiring those two individuals. Originally, we had a full-time position, now we're going to two part-timers. Even hiring two part-timers, we're still below what our projected budget is for that position. Moving on, I make the motion to have Resolution 2024-023 of shredding of City Hall basement documents. Do I have a second? Savage.
Yes.
Barnhart.
Yes.
Martina.
Yes.
Ister.
Yes.
Croches.
Yes.
Yes. And just so everyone knows, we're still hiring those two individuals. Originally, we had a full-time position, now we're going to two part-timers. Even hiring two part-timers, we're still below what our projected budget is for that position. Moving on, I make the motion to have Resolution 2024-023 of shredding of City Hall basement documents. Do I have a second? Savage.
Yes.
Barnhart.
Yes.
Martina.
Yes.
Ister.
Yes.
Croches.
Yes.
Yes. That's one less thing to have to worry about cleaning around, right? Moving on, Councilman Barnhart.
Public use and subvention ordinance, some changes are going to be made. Mr. Racker, would you like to...
So there was some language that needed to be cleaned up and removed, so we're just amending this to ensure that the enforceability is correct, and this would be the first reading, because that would take two readings to amend this correctly.
Yeah. Go ahead, Councilman Barnhart. Let me make the motion.
I make that into a motion. First, let's read it.
Second. Martina.
Yes.
Ister.
Yes.
Savage.
Yes.
Croches.
Yes.
Barnhart.
Yes.
Keep going, Councilman Barnhart.
There's been some incidents, happened last year and this year with dog leash laws. I just wanted to make everybody aware that I just read the first one there. Off the premises of the owner and/or custodian and unaccompanied by the owner and/or custodian or a member of his or her immediate family or a person authorized by the owner, or accompanied by any of the foregoing persons but off-leash unless without boundaries of the authorized dog park or other locally designated area or not reasonably controlled. There was, there was an incident where someone was attacked. I want everyone to know that this, and cleaning up your fecal matter, not yours, but your dog's, to make sure you're... And any person who violates any provision of this article shall be guilty of a summary offense and upon conviction be punishable by a fine of not more than $1,000 plus cost of prosecution or 90 days imprisonment or parole. So this isn't something that we take lightly. It is an ordinance, and here it is. So if you had your dog running around, hit and attack somebody, you possibly could go to jail for 90 days, so make sure you keep your dog on leash. That's all.
That's all I have to say about that.
That's all I have to say about that.
Councilman Savage.
So looking at tax exoneration, I would like to make a motion to accept the request to be exonerated from city taxes in the amount, total amount of $916.74 for four people due to three of them being on a limited social security income and one who is deceased.
Second. Barnhart.
Yes.
Martina.
Yes.
Ister.
Yes.
Savage.
Yes.
Croches.
Yes.
Yes. And you got that invite for the bid opening, right?
Mm-hmm.
Awesome, thank you, Kurt. I have one addition to the agenda. It is a notice to work the winning bid to the Reagan Street intersection improvement, so I make the motion to add that to the agenda. Is there a second? Savage.
Yes.
Barnhart.
Yes.
Martina.
Yes.
Ister.
Yes.
Croches.
Yes.
All right, moving on. There is no old business, but there is new business, and I'm just going to go right through what we just added. So is there any questions on the awarding bid? All right, so I'll make the motion to accept the winning bid to Trow Electric Inc. out of Watson Town for the winning bid for the Reagan Street Improvement intersection. Do I have a second?
A second.
Barnhart.
Yes.
Martina.
Yes.
Ister.
Yes.
Croches.
Yes.
Yes. Moving on, Councilman Barnhart.
Public use and subvention ordinance, some changes are going to be made. Mr. Racker, would you like to...
So there was some language that needed to be cleaned up and removed, so we're just amending this to ensure that the enforceability is correct, and this would be the first reading, because that would take two readings to amend this correctly.
Yeah. Go ahead, Councilman Barnhart. Let me make the motion.
I make that into a motion. First, let's read it.
Second. Martina.
Yes.
Ister.
Yes.
Savage.
Yes.
Croches.
Yes.
Barnhart.
Yes.
Keep going, Councilman Barnhart.
There's been some incidents, happened last year and this year with dog leash laws. I just wanted to make everybody aware that I just read the first one there. Off the premises of the owner and/or custodian and unaccompanied by the owner and/or custodian or a member of his or her immediate family or a person authorized by the owner, or accompanied by any of the foregoing persons but off-leash unless without boundaries of the authorized dog park or other locally designated area or not reasonably controlled. There was, there was an incident where someone was attacked. I want everyone to know that this, and cleaning up your fecal matter, not yours, but your dog's, to make sure you're... And any person who violates any provision of this article shall be guilty of a summary offense and upon conviction be punishable by a fine of not more than $1,000 plus cost of prosecution or 90 days imprisonment or parole. So this isn't something that we take lightly. It is an ordinance, and here it is. So if you had your dog running around, hit and attack somebody, you possibly could go to jail for 90 days, so make sure you keep your dog on leash. That's all.
That's all I have to say about that.
That's all I have to say about that.
Councilman Savage.
So looking at tax exoneration, I would like to make a motion to accept the request to be exonerated from city taxes in the amount, total amount of $916.74 for four people due to three of them being on a limited social security income and one who is deceased.
Second. Barnhart.
Yes.
Martina.
Yes.
Ister.
Yes.
Croches.
Yes.
Yes. Discussion items, Mr. Racker.
The recently multi-monthly grant is coming up for submission due by the end of July, so we do have some time, but I would just bring that up because I know there's obviously quite a few street projects that we are working on this year, or street projects we are working on unless you are going to come and work on it next year again, so there's a lot of things coming up. So I just wanted to put that on everybody's mind to figure out really where we want this money to go to and really what would be the best...
Questions, anyone, comments?
We can talk more, I'll be there, we have some time on this. I just wanted to bring it up to give us... So if you had your dog running around, hit and attack somebody, you possibly could go to jail for ninety days. So make sure you keep your dog on leash. That's all.
That's all I have to say about that.
That's all I have to say about that.
Uh, Councilman Savage.
So looking at tax exoneration, I would like to make a motion to accept the request to be exonerated from city taxes in the amount, total amount of nine hundred and sixteen dollars seventy-four cents for four people due to three of them being on a limited social security income and one who is deceased.
Second. Barnhart.
Yes.
Martina. Ister. Savage.
Yes. Keep going, Councilman Savage.
I would also like to make a motion for the approval of the abstracts and vouchers for the general fund in the amount of three hundred ninety-nine thousand five hundred forty dollars eighteen cents with the fuels fund in the amount of ten thousand dollars five hundred ninety-seven, sorry, ten thousand five hundred ninety-seven dollars forty-nine cents and payroll, uh, two payrolls in the amount of sixty-seven thousand seven hundred eighty-one dollars seventy-one cents for on four twenty-six and sixty-seven thousand three hundred eighty-seven dollars and four cents.
I know.
Second.
Martina.
Yes.
Ister. Savage.
Yes.
Grochus.
Yes.
Barnhart.
Yes.
Uh, discussion items, Mr. Racker.
Uh, the recently multi-monthly grant is coming up, uh, for submission due by the end of July. Uh, so we do have some time, but I would bring that up because I know there's obviously quite a few street projects that we are working on this year or three projects we are working on, unless you are going to come and work on it next year again. So I just wanted to bring it in with the pigs coming up. Um, so I just wanted to put that on everybody's mind to figure out really where we want this money to go to um and really what would be the best.
Questions, anyone? Comments?
We can talk more. I'll be, we have some time. I just wanted to bring it up to give us the most time as possible. Because I know that maybe we'll.
Alright, uh, go ahead, Councilman Barnhart.
Uh, it's the uh noise ordinance. I know what it says. It's, I think it's centered around the fog. You have to have the noise turned down. But uh, I, I walk around town and I hear in the summer especially you have thickness and the noises, music is so loud you can hear it like two blocks away. I just want people to be a little bit more courteous to your neighbors. You don't have to have a blare of, you know, I'm, I do not have it so compared to the area either. But try to, try to maintain a, a little bit of courtesy towards your neighbors.
Or invite us over.
Yeah, or if you invite your neighbors over, you won't have any complaints. And keep going.
Keep on going.
Uh, IWorks had for uh, to pay online. Uh, Mr. Rhodes, would you like to, what we, we discussed that we didn't talk to the chief yet.
Black chat. So um, John had to come report to a proposal that IWorks, which is what makes computers not bill office. And we're at the police department and the department of law courts. Uh, they implemented a new program of where people can go into their program and uh pay their outstanding bills to the code office, like their housing permits or uh violation tickets or something to that matter. Um, there's a couple of things in the contract that concern me, uh, reading that we have to give the free year term. Um, and the reason why that's concerned me is I'm afraid that because of the off-site option, we're not gonna be able to use, that's not gonna be utilized for the money that we have to pay to offer. So talking to John and Travis Henjum, um, the city center already has an online pay. It's right on our city website. The police department uses it for their parking enforcement. So um, talking to Travis uh this afternoon.
That's alright.
Um, we're gonna look at if we can maybe back off of them. That way it doesn't cost us no extra, the city no extra money and it would be as simple as going to the city website. It's not a lost site, so people won't get lost and then have another reason why they're not paying their house. Um, so yes, I would like to explore um the current uh online pay that helped the uh card that people call in and pay by card is working great. Um, that's another option we have. I would just like to put some of the options forward.
Just make it a little easier to, to contrast.
Twenty twenty-four. And people do this stuff everywhere.
You're right.
I think it's a great idea, so. Well, listen, government wheels turn real slow. So we're getting there, maybe one day. This is, this is not tonight.
Not everything to check now. We've come a little, you know, we went a mile.
Yeah, yeah.
We, we have a mile. Yeah. Yeah, it's correct.
Remember, it's a marathon, not a sprint. Alright, uh, moving on, boat launch lights. I know the dam's gone up last week, two weeks ago. People have just been reaching out. Now the dam's up, there's more fishermen down there, remote borders. They just want to see what the status is and maybe get at least one of the lights probably around that boat launch to get up and working so it's not as.
There's, we're, I talked to KNN about the lights. We're just working on them today.
I've seen that, yep, you've got it, fantastic.
And I don't know if they got it done.
Well, that's what, I was gonna go after the main, but like, any timeline, but.
Well, it's either done today or a little while, it might rain tomorrow. But all the parts are ready, so we're good.
Is the back two lights too?
We get enough to do all.
Okay, fantastic. Listen, I only seen the front two, but.
Well, they didn't get that part early yet.
Fantastic.
The deal is we're gonna get those done. I have a guy working on moonlights in Front Street and he's also researching, change your heads out, the boat launch.
Okay, I'll make sure I pass them. There's this one, it's just, you know, trying to make that.
I don't fish in the dark. I'm standing up one fish.
So the last, the fish aren't in the party.
When you're looking at that, there was down at the uh, south end of town, that walkway.
Under the bridge or whatever.
Yeah, under, yeah. Is there any way we could put some kind of lighting down there? It's a safety issue.
That's how it's from the pollution department.
True.
See, John, he just said it. Get it done, do what you gotta do. Alright, well, that's good news, so that's good news. Uh, so there are some announcements, a couple of them. So they're accepting letters to uh to any one, one open spot to the hard, must be licensed contractor. Uh, accepting letters of interest to seven open spots on the nuisance abatement appeals board. The annual fire police indoor sale at the ice rink is May twenty-second from nine AM to four PM. The memorial day parade and ceremony uh is on May twenty-seventh, starting at eight AM from Raspberry Avenue out tenth down Market Street. All Paul's Great and Small Animal Rescue on June first from eight to one via Central Park on Fifth Street, next to Dagenstein Library. Uh, the tattoo convention Ink to Rin will be taking place June seventh through the ninth at the ice skating rink. Uh, any questions, please contact Chris Booker. The summer kickoff will be taking place June eighth down by the river, starting at twelve. Also on June eighth, the sandwich rule will be taking place with multiple businesses throughout Market Street. Tickets are still available and need to be purchased by Wenjo.
May thirty-first.
May thirty-first, that can be done on SRI website or contact them and they'll hook you up with whoever you need. Uh, TV metal can recycling will be taking place June twenty-ninth from, the ice skating rink parking lot from ten AM to one PM. There will be a one dollar charge per pound for TVs. Uh, heavier TVs will be more of a cost. No dishwashers, wood, plastic or glass. Uh, DEI Diversity Festival at Cameron Park on June twentieth. Oh, I'm sorry, July twentieth. Andres, is there a time for that? Or to be announced? To be announced. Uh, Christmas in July is Saturday, July twenty-seventh from nine AM to four PM at Cameron Park. Uh, Latin, uh, Latin Festival Riverfront on June tenth.
August.
Oh, my gosh.
Wow, August.
August tenth. I just don't want the summer to go largely fast. Uh, August tenth. And any other announcements? Oh, oh, I missed the next council meeting. Oh, that's June tenth. June tenth, next council meeting, here at six fifteen. Now, is there any public comment at this time? Alright, I'm gonna start here, work my way back. Go ahead, ma'am, please say your name.
Uh, my name is Colleen Cox. Um, last Monday, I was attacked by two dogs off-leash. Um, I called the dog warden who was not on duty. Um, and about two minutes after, I got off the phone with him. These two dogs were in front of my house, which I had them on camera footage, uh, wandering around still off-leash. So I called the police department. Um, I was told when I called, I was assuming it was the communications department, that the police would do nothing for that, that they could not catch dogs. However, a police officer did show up at my house and spoke with me. I am ninety-eight percent sure that he told me he could not help me in any way, even though you're telling me that he could have, um, unless my dog and I had been seriously injured. Um, somebody needs to train the police officers better or something, um, because this is not right. I was then also told by the dog warden that I need to start walking my dog through Sunbury or I will, or I will get attacked again. That's not right. People need to be able to walk through town without worrying about being attacked by dogs.
I, I guess I can't speak on the dog warden. I can only speak on the police department's behalf and.
I get that.
Chief, I don't know if, I don't know if you have much on, on, on what happened or maybe just.
I, I don't know what training we would do with it, with the officers.
I mean, other than telling them that they can actually do something to help.
I, I'll tell you this, I, I myself, with the, with the dog ward, we talked to the dog ward. Um, the dog ward, they have no place to put these dogs. Um, I, myself can't have an officer tied up, basically go out and grab a dog and then we have no place to put it.
Right. I'm not saying that you needed, he needed to go catch those dogs and eat them. I knew where they belonged. I could've told him where to take them. The problem was, is these dogs were still running around. They had just attacked me and my dog. What was to say that they didn't come upon another human being and attacked them worse than what they did me?
What did the dog warden tell you?
The dog warden told me he couldn't help me because I called the police.
Because you called the police?
Yes, because it was now a police matter.
I don't like that, but.
I'm.
I mean, myself, I'm, I'm not saying you can do that. But what, what I know is, I know just the, this is like six months ago. I was attacked by two pickles. I went in to basically, went in after the dogs and I was, I was bitten forearm, I was bitten the back of the leg, I was bitten this leg. Like I was, I was mauled. So that dog ended up getting put down. Um, only after it attacked two other dogs. I know we just had a recent dog attack up on Sixth Street. Um, a Chihuahua was killed um, by, by, by a dog. I know the dog warden, we called the dog, the dog warden, the dog warden said, we're gonna handle it. The way they handled it was that they weren't feeding the dog to the house, but the dog still was allowed to go on the leash and, and stuff like that. But it, with, with the dog running at large, I do agree with you, it, it is an issue. Um, unfortunately, we don't, I don't, I don't know what would be the exact, the right answer for you to give you the satisfaction to say that training an officer to go, to go after a dog. I mean, I, what, what kind of training would you like to say?
Can I interject there, chief? Uh, you can give them a summary offense.
We can absolutely get, well, we can give them a summary offense with the, the dog running at large. Uh, the state dog warden would come in and basically handle that citation.
I don't know. The, the dog warden told me that the police can do that.
Yeah, we, we usually put everything to the dog and, and that's, that's not an issue. I mean, basically with this new ordinance that they just put out, I can see, I mean, we can look at, I mean.
I'm sure that's not a new ordinance.
Put the dogs down at city hall.
Ordinance was written in nineteen eighty-two.
Which one?
The one he read.
Yeah. But is there a place that we can put the dogs? Like maybe we have a kennel?
Sir, I knew where the dogs were supposed to be. I could have said, if you catch them, take them back to this person and give them a fine. That's what I'm saying. Like I knew where the dogs belong. Of my, like, like, the officer told me because I was unharmed, he could not do anything for me. And that's not right. So like, I'm supposed to walk through town and let a dog attack me so that something can be done?
No, not at all.
That's why I'm like.
This is the best thing you can do. Cause I, I mean, in, in, in here, I don't know, because I don't have the incident in front of me without seeing the incident, who handled it and basically what happened. I'm the police department. Yeah, I'm, I'm there tomorrow. If you want to come down, I'll be there. I probably.
Colleen.
I'm preparing for trial. So I'll be there from like eight AM to probably ten o'clock tomorrow night. So you can come down anytime and come see me.
Colleen, how long did it take for the dog warden to get, for you to get ahold of the dog warden?
Oh, well, the dog warden called me back the next day.
The next day?
Obviously, I'm, it was like five o'clock in the afternoon when I called.
Did you ever get ahold of, uh, President or?
No, because when I called back the next day to speak with the officer again, I was told I had to keep calling back until I got the officer at the station.
Instead of them taking her number to have him call her.
God, hey, we're not gonna obviously solve, no, no, you're okay. Obviously, we're not gonna solve it here tonight, but I think that's.
It's time to get solved, but the, the, the people of the city need to understand that if they walk through this town, they are not safe. I'm sorry, but they're not. I'm done. Sorry.
You don't have to be, you don't have to be sorry about anything. Alright, uh, any other public comment? Please say your name, ma'am.
Sandra Heim. I live here in Sunbury. I'm here today as a representative of Save Our Susquehanna. There's a couple of, a few of us here. Um, we, we have been against the Encina plant since the beginning, or since we knew about the beginning. Um, we are glad to see them go, but the other side of that is we don't want another journey oil industry manufacturer, whatever, coming in here and, and turning this into another cancer alley. Um, we would like to see some clean jobs coming in, ones that won't make our people sick, um, that won't make our kids sick, um, that don't cause cancer. Those, those are primary things. Um, one of the things we found out while we were pursuing this was um, Focus PA is a government private consortium and that is basically um a scheme to where people can do private business with government subsidies, tax breaks, whatever you wanna call them, but not have to follow regulations. Um, so Focus PA has already said they want to make this area along the Susquehanna River as an energy corridor. Well, Focus PA is very much into the oil and gas industry. There, they support fracking and all of that stuff. We don't want it in here. Um, we want clean jobs. Another one is a team, team PA, which is a similar type thing. We just heard about that a few weeks ago. But they're looking at the same thing. Um, and the third one, and probably the most important, is DRIVE. DRIVE is one of these government private consortium things. They were working under the table long before any of the public knew that um, Encina was coming in here. It was already a done deal by time, by time the public was made aware of it. We don't want any more of that happening. Um, also, as, I'm not just a member of Save Our Susquehanna. How I got into that was, um, I'm also a, a trained leader for the Climate Reality Project, which is an international organization. Um, and we went to the first open house that um, Encina put on. When we went, we were excited. Somebody was gonna do something about plastic. By time we left, it was like we all left with, and we all had science degrees, the people that were there that night. They, they're hiding something. Something's not right here. We were very upset about it. That's what got us to get this Save Our Susquehanna group together. It's a grassroots people. Um, they're, it was brought up at some point that it was outside instigators and all of this. Well, if you consider Lewisburg outside, then yeah. Um, I don't consider Lewisburg outside the area. There were some people from other places, far away as New York, and we now have one in our group from East Palestine, Ohio. Um, they did not come here to instigate. We called them for their expertise. Um, and that's, and I would like to offer my services to the city council. I can give you a presentation on, you don't understand about plastics or climate change and all of that good stuff.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Please say your name, sir.
Uh, Tyler, Chris, Senator, just real quick. I was gonna, wasn't gonna ask about the lights, but just updating on that, fantastic. Um, so before with our meeting, uh, we've always asked, you know, like, with the skate park and everything, um, the chief of police, is there anything that we can do to help? We were just kinda talking about it. Would it be beneficial for like the grants that we're going for to maybe have the city or the chief of police kinda say like why maybe the skate park is important to put the use? Like is that even a sure great point? But that, that printing all these letters, we're gonna seem to start applying for grant solutions?
Did you get the letter I sent you? I did, I did a letter and sent it to you.
Yes, yes, they're making us?
Yeah, well, not, not like that, but also telling you, basically it said that the city supports the skate park and it's important. The reason I sent that to you was so that you could use it in your grant process.
I was gonna, yeah.
That's what that was for. I just, because at the last meeting, we, uh, Afam Pula had brought up the subject that it may be a good idea to, for me to send you a letter and that's why I did, just to be aware.
And thank you for that.
No, no, sure.
And I was like, okay. So that's what we should use?
That's what we should use it for. And obviously you can come back and, you know, get whatever you need. A lot of these grants, I think, Eric, you can, if you're not supporting this, will have necessary documentation that we might have to help on, okay? Um, and we'll certainly do that. But that letter, I think for local organizations especially, you know, Dagenstein and those kind of organizations, it may be enough that it sets out the fact that you're being supported by the city, which should give you some credibility.
Okay, okay, thank you.
And so to, to get back to what I was saying, um, there might be a point that there might, a government entity might have to be the applicant for this because we are the owners of the property and we're the only ones that can apply for it because nonprofits may not be able to. Therefore, we might go to you for a letter of support saying you support this and, and it's kinda, it, it's a partnership, basically, like you were talking about. So it just kinda depends on what grants we kinda go for. But each entity should be involved with the process regardless, to a point, obviously depending on what the grants are. But each entity should definitely have a conversation every time we're applying for a grant. um, and, you know, give the proper documentation or advice or whatever it may be.
Any other public comment at this time? Any other public comment? Alright, adjourn this meeting.